This public meeting was sent to the home news and the Star Ledger as required by Chapter 231 Public Law in 1975. Mr. DeAndrea posted the notice outside his office too. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeAndrea, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Balka?
Here.
Mrs. Bakko?
Present.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Brodinsky?
Present.
Mrs. Depinto?
Present.
Mr. McNoon?
Present and I'm here to serve.
Mrs. Trapp? Mr. Walsh?
Present.
Mr. Sayak?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Tonight's presentation on the agenda is the Let the Children Lead program, which features the Samsoth 5th grade students as school board members and administrators. You are welcome to take pictures of us tonight, but please do not post the pictures on Facebook so we can stay safe. Mr. DeAndrea, is there any correspondence?
No.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes. The board has received copies of the minutes from the February 18th and February 25th meeting. The February 25th meeting minutes are withdrawn. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second? Do we have, okay. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes?
Motion by Mr. McNoon. Second by Mrs. Depinto.
Mr. DeAndrea, roll call please.
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brokinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Depinto?
Yes.
Mr. McNoon?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Motion carried. Will the student council representative please give your report?
We had a chocolate gram sale for Valentine's Day, which was very successful with $200 profit. The parent-teacher conferences were also great, which had full student involvement.
Are there any questions for the student council representative? Are there any other questions? Will the parent involvement representative please give your report?
Our most recent parent involvement meeting was held on February 10th in the high school media center. The meeting focused on making the most of parent-teacher conferences. Parents were reminded of the importance of having positive, open dialogue between the parent and teacher, discussing any problems, concerns, or situations that are going on in their child's life, good and not so good, in school as well as at home. Parents were also reminded that teachers are always available by email. Lastly, if a parent is not available on conference day or night, they can also make an appointment with the teacher, either for a phone call or actual meeting. Our next pick meeting will be held on Monday, March 10th at 7:00 PM in the high school media center.
Are there any questions for the parent involvement representative? Are there any other questions? There is no attorney reports this evening. Mrs. Depinto, would you please share the district highlights?
On February 21st, 2014, nearly 500 students in grade K through 3 participated in Jump Rope for Heart. This community service project was planned in conjunction with this year's school theme. We the students and provided the children an opportunity to benefit from the physical activities as well as doing something to help others. The Truman School Jump for Heart and enthusiastic group and a fun time was had by all. Special thanks to Ms. Caroline Knackenberger, physical education teacher, for organizing and leading this worthwhile activity for the students. Also, many thanks to the PTO for their involvement in helping with this project. They raised $5,500.00 for the American Heart Association. Once again, thank you Truman School families for your support in this endeavor. Congratulations to Samsoth Upper Elementary School tag students and their teacher, Ms. Jennifer Mahu. County Freehold Polos visited Ms. Mahu's tag class and was photographed with a group of her tag students with their new vermi composter. During Freeholders Polos' visit, the tag students performed the skit entitled "We Can Change the World." He was so impressed with it that he has invited the class to come perform it at the next Middlesex County Freeholders' meeting. He intended to purchase shirts for the children and would like the skit to be filmed and made into a commercial advertisement for recycling. Another job well done.
Thank you, Mrs. Depinto.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I would like to add something. It is with great pride that I am announcing that one of our very own elementary teachers has accepted a book deal with Herlican Corina. Writing as Annabelle Bryant, the book is titled "To Love a Wicked Scoundrel" and is due out this spring as a digital first release. Please visit Annabelle Bryant's Facebook page to get up-to-date news on this historical romance story. Don't forget to like the page. Congratulations, Annabelle, we are proud of you.
Thank you, that's great news. Dr. Alfano, would you please give us your superintendent report?
Um, A, Buildings and Grounds. One, approve a car show fundraiser. The event will be sponsored by the Auto Tech Club on June 22nd, 2014. Are there any questions for A?
Will custodians be needed for the car show since it's on a Sunday?
Yes. Any other questions? B, Finance. Approve the creation of an additional project before preschool class. Number two, approve the creation of a full-time project before teaching position. Number three, approve the creation of a part-time paraprofessional position for a project before preschool class. Number four, approve an amendment for professional services contract to sharing communications for speech-language services. Number five, approve a contract with Plan Connect for their retirement plans. Number six, approve the attendance of Emilio DeAndrea, Board Secretary Business Administrator at the NJASBO Conference. Number seven, apply for anti-bullying application. Number eight, approve Dr. Alfano at NJASA Convention. Number nine, abolish full-time in-class support position. Number 10, create 3/5 time in-class support teacher. Are there any questions?
Yes. Dr. Alfano, can you please tell me what does 3/5 times mean?
She only teaches 3 classes instead of 5.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to C, Personnel, Non-Certified.
Wait, we have one question. Number five, what services are they providing?
They are keeping us compliant with the IRS regulations.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Um, now we're moving on to C, Personnel, Non-Certified. Number one, honor the retirement of Thomas Stomaieni. Number two, approve the lateral transfer of Joyce Griz. Number three, approve the following job description for Chief Technical Officer, Coordinator of Technology and Infrastructure. Number two, to approve the following revised job description, payroll processor. Number five, approve the sub-list. Are there any questions? We are now moving on to D, Personnel Certified. Grant a subsequent child rearing leave. Number two, grant an unpaid personal leave. Number three, approve the following certified personnel for the SAT prep program. Number four, approve the following job description, Director of Special Projects Technology. Number five, acknowledge the selection of the following teachers to represent the Serval District in the 2014 Annual Middlesex County Governor's Teacher Recognition Program. Judith Berg Frile, Arlett Elementary School; Dina Silvestri, Eisenhower Elementary School; Lisa Haynes, Truman Elementary School; Carrie DiStefano, Wilson Elementary School; Liliana Marku, Samsoth Upper Elementary School; Melissa Siampa, Serval Middle School; Jeanette Skordinsky, Serval War Memorial High School. Number six, approve the employment of the following teachers. Number seven, approve the following substitute teacher list. Number eight, approve professional duty list. Are there any questions?
On behalf of the Board of Education, we congratulate the Teachers of the Year.
There is no report for policy, so we will go to F, Curriculum. Number two, approve- Number one, the Board of Education is requested to accept harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports and findings for reports number 7, 17, 2013/14. Number two, approve the recommendation of the Board's disciplinary committee. Number three, approve the following new course, Tomorrow's Teachers, High School. Number four, approve the following-
Dr. Alfano, what is course title all about?
Ms. Zeichner, would you please explain that?
It's for seniors who want to be teachers. It's a competitive course with AP credit. And it includes practical experience in the classroom.
Thank you. Um, number-
Are there any requirements for this course?
What type of requirements?
Pre-requisites.
Yes. The student must have at least a B in courses and teacher recommendation. They must write an essay. And they must, um- And they must have a clean discipline record.
Thank you. Moving on, number four, approve the following for the Special Services Department. Are there any questions? Moving on to G, Co-Curriculum. Number one, approve the Samsoth Upper Elementary School to host the Green Fest. Number two, approve NJTV Classroom Close-Up to return to the Samsoth Upper Elementary School on April 10th, 2014 to showcase their encore performance and rehearsal for the Poetry Meets Percussion Club. Are there any questions?
Yes. Dr. Alfano, what is a Green Fest?
It's a recycling program.
Thank you.
Moving on to H, Support Services. Waive the transportation policy as outlined. Number three, to retroactively approve the following trip. Number four, approve the use of board buses on the following dates to shuttle passengers between the Serval Middle School and Serval High School. Number five, approve the use of board buses on the following dates to transport tag students. Number six, approve the following 12 trips. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
How are students selected for the NJAS tutorial program and do they pay for it?
They do not pay for it. And Ms. Zeichner will give you the criteria.
It's based on students' test scores and teacher recommendation. Thank you.
Do any board members have any other questions or comments about Dr. Alfano's report? At this time, we would like to open up for the public participation on agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. We will close club-
We have some questions from the audience.
Good evening. Thank you for attending our 5th Annual Let the Children Lead program. My name is Mr. Gentile and I am the District Supervisor of Humanities. Dr. Alfano, our superintendent, proposed the idea that members of our 5th grade class would assume the responsibilities of the Board of Education, members and members of the administrative team. We believe that civics is the backbone of our government and we hope that this exercise will promote curiosity and future explorations of our government and our community to our students. I would like to introduce Mr. Brown, the principal of Serval War Memorial High School.
Thank you. This is one of the most critical months in a high school student's career. The annual HSBA assessment will take place early in March along with annual testing and NG pass. These test results will have a direct impact on a student's placement and schedule for the upcoming year. The HSBA test is in its last year as a graduation requirement for the high school. All students are encouraged to get the appropriate amount of rest, eat a good breakfast, and come to the testing location ready to get down to the business. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now I would like to introduce Ms. Jakubek, the principal of Serval Middle School.
Serval Middle School strives to develop academic programs that meet the individual and unique needs of pre-teens. The middle school curriculum of 6th, 7th, and 8th grade recognizes the transitional nature of these middle years, which serve as a bridge between the structured elementary grades and the more independent and career-driven education available in high school. The middle school has continued to experience growth in the co-curricular and extracurricular areas. Our talented and gifted and of the mind programs continue to complete in the number of states and national events. We have a very active student council and community service above through which students develop to sense of citizenship and social responsibility. Students hone their literary skills and by working on our literary magazine, school newspaper, and yearbook to capture and portray an essence of our school community. We offer a wide range of athletic programs, all of which focus on developing character and sportsmanship on and off the field. Additionally, the drama and vocal instrumental program, music program, provide an atmosphere that fosters an appreciation and understanding of the importance of the art in our curricula. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Jakubek. Now I would like to introduce Ms. Marr, the principal of the Samsoth Upper Elementary School.
Dr. Alfano, Mrs. Zeichner Shediak, Mrs. Fashendo, fellow board administrators and the Board of Education. I am Ms. Marr and I would like to thank all of you for allowing us to be a part of this meeting. Our teachers and students are very hardworking and value the education we have. I can tell you that the lessons are rigorous and they help all students to learn new things. Many of our students attend the after-school tutorial, which meets from 2 to 3 days a week and really helps them improve their skills and learning. At the Samsoth Upper Elementary School, we have a lot of events taking place. Many of our 5th grade students and staff members participate in the Green Team, which teaches students how to care for the earth. Our school held a waste-free lunch contest, which was very successful and decreased a lot of the waste we produce. This year's school theme continues to be bucket filling. Students strive to fill each other's buckets in many ways, one such as the pennies for patience drive or simply by doing nice things. We also happen to have a wonderful PTO who have hosted many activities throughout the year and recently the book fair to increase reading by everyone. We are all looking forward to the second half of the school year and the many amazing things that will happen then. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marr. Now I would like to introduce Mr. Preston, the principal of Emma L. Arlett Elementary School.
Arlett is a kindergarten 3rd grade elementary school with approximately 500 students. Arlett hosts a variety of programs for the diverse learners in our school community. We continually strive to provide a variety of engaging learning activities for the students. This includes the integration of technology into the daily program. Students also participate in project-based learning and explore STEM projects in our courtyard garden. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Now I would like to introduce Mr. Agulies, the principal of Dwight D. Eisenhower Elementary School.
At Eisenhower School, we are excited about the new changes to our 3rd grade standardized test. We are busy at work learning how to use our Chromebooks so that we will be able to do our best as we move from the NJX to Park. We have had some exciting family activities this year, including scary movie night and our tricky tray. We're continuing our work with being great community members through our work in food drives and clothing drives and recycling activities. Eisenhower continues to thrive as a school that cares about learning and cares about our community. Thank you. And does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Agulies. Now I would like to introduce Mrs. Coffey, the principal of Harry S. Elementary School.
Throughout the year, the Harry S. Truman School students are experiencing an exciting school theme, "We the Students." In addition to this theme bringing history to life by celebrating America through topics and activities that provide opportunities for them to learn about national symbols of American beliefs, such as Liberty Bell, Mount Rushmore, the Statue of Liberty, et cetera, it involves them in setting and reaching goals, solving problems, developing character traits, making good choices, protecting the planet, and committing to good health and physical fitness. Truman School continues to implement the trash-free lunch incentive in order to do their part to save the plant's resources by using less of them. The school's Good Citizenship Program fosters positive behavior, mutual respect, and a sense of social responsibility. Students are involved in learning experiences and community service projects that celebrates good citizenship each month by sponsoring a luncheon called the Constitution Cafe, in which one homeroom class at a designated grade level that exhibits the character trait of the month is the principal's guest of honor. With popular demand and motivational incentive, reading program, Pause to Read, in which students from each homeroom have an opportunity to read to one of the therapy dogs is being implemented once again. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Coffey. Now I would like to introduce Mrs. Davis, the principal of Woodrow Wilson Elementary School.
The theme for Wilson Elementary School this year is "Under the Sea with Literacy." We have a special focus on reading across all contact areas. As students enter the school building each morning, they have an opportunity to choose a book from the treasure chest. Students sit quietly and read exciting books. Whenever our principal, Ms. Davis, observes 100% of the students in class reading, they might be selected a pencil, stickers, or a trinket. Sometimes there are several winners within the school building. Today, grades 1 and 3 were received a pencil. At Wilson School, we enjoy reading. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Now I would like to introduce the Director of Facilities and Maintenance, Ms. Dennis Pantoliano.
Below is a list of capital improvements that is scheduled to be accomplished within the school year. The maintenance department will be changing out all classroom door locks, giving all teachers the ability of locking classroom doors, door locks from within the classroom. The Serval Board of Education will be adding additional security cameras and entry door card accesses systems to all of our schools throughout the school district. The maintenance department will be replacing 10 classroom heating units at Arlett School, Arlett School along with heating controls. The Serval Board of Education in the early spring will be going out to bid to replace the roof at Truman School this summer. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you for putting the heat on.
Finally, last but not least, I would like to introduce Mr. Byrne.
The Special Services Department helps the students-
The special services department helps the students from preschool till after high school. We are also in schools in Serval and in schools out of our district. Our department has many teachers and paraprofessionals who help our students and their families. We want to start a parent-friendly council to help our parents better understand how their children learn. If your child receives our services, please contact Mr. Byrne at the Samso Upper Elementary School. The phone number is seven three two three one six four oh eight three. Email, email is timothy.burn@servelk12.net. Any questions?
Mr. Syak, I have a, I have a comment for the public. Um, I think we should have a student committee help plan the lunches with the nutritionist each month.
Is there any other discussion than that? Does that include pizza and hot dogs?
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you. We will close pub- public at this time. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
Wait, I need to finish up. This concludes our portion of the meeting. Do we have any final questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Can we have a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any, are there any comments or questions on the superintendent's report? Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Mr. DeAndrea, roll call, please.
Ms. Tabak?
No on item. Section C, number three, and section H, number four.
Can you please repeat that?
Section C, number three, and section H, number four. What page? Section three, number, section C, number three is page four, and section eight, number four is page twenty-two.
Voting no? Mrs. Tabak?
I'll be voting no on page four, number three, and page twenty-two, number four. Yes to everything else.
What page? What was the second one?
Page, page twenty-two, number four.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brodczynski?
I will be voting no on section H, item four, and everything else is good.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes. Motion carried. I also serve as delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association. The only thing of interest to, to report is that New Jersey has a new education commissioner. His name is David Hespe and he has served as education commissioner before. He is a friend to N- NJSBA and we are very excited about his selection as the next commissioner. That concludes my report. Are then, are there any committee reports?
Mr. Syak, I have a committee report.
Okay, Mrs. Fazendo.
I am pleased to announce that the first Strategic Furtherance Committee meeting of the Serval War Memorial High School took place on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. I would also like to mention the use of Web two point O technology tools in the classroom was discussed.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports?
The finance committee would like to announce that, that we are, that we were awarded an extra one hundred, one hundred thousand, twenty-two thousand dollars in state aid and that the budget will be presented shortly.
Through the direction of coaches, Ms. Christina McCabe and Mr. Jason Brown, Serval did, did a wonderful job hosting the Odyssey of the Mind Regional Competition at the middle and high school, which were held on Saturday, March fourth. Odyssey of the Mind is a competition of creativity, usually made up of six team members who worked tirelessly beginning in October, sometimes through May. We brought seven teams to last weekend's competition. Unfortunately, none of our teams advanced to the next round, but not for a lack of effort. These teams put, put their blood, sweat, and tears into their problem and for that, we, the Serval School District, are very proud. Kudos.
Are there any other committee reports? We have one item on the agenda for discussion, which is next year's school calendar. The board has received a copy of the calendar. I'd like to open it up to discussion. When does school start next year? September second. Dr. Alfano, are we gonna have any snow days next year?
No.
There's two snow days built into the calendar for next year. Proposed. Is the board okay with that?
Yes.
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 So we agree on something. Um, don't call me. Do we wanna have school on Fri- Friday, January second? That's at the end of the vacation. Why would we? Why not?
Why would we come back for one day?
Why not? So we can get out earlier. So what?
We're already ending too late in June.
It's up to the board. What would the board like to do? Keep it closed at Friday. Is everyone in favor of that?
Yes.
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 Is anyone opposed? Is there any other discussion on the calendar? Yes. I would like to know what my fellow board members think about an extending school day or year.
What do you think, ladies and gentlemen?
It's negotiable. It's negotiable.
Go for it. What do you think?
Would you rather have a longer day or year?
Both. Rather have air conditioning.
You have it in here now. Well, eventually the state is gonna consider-
Thanks, Mr. DeAndrea.
Any other discussion on this topic? The board will consider the, the calendar after the, the next meeting when the teachers provide the input. Are there any other items we wish to discuss? Once again, I'd like to open it up to, to public for any item concerning the school district. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Allison Hornbeck, Seven Triflu Drive. Um, to expand upon what Mr. DeAndrea had said, Mr. Syak, concerning the, um, the student committee to meet with maybe Mrs. Jenkins to talk about the lunch? What did you think about that?
Me personally?
Yeah. Well, as a, as a board member.
No, I, I, I think it's a good idea.
So is that something that maybe we can propose to her or? I don't know if you know where it came out. We had an event at the UES and we were, you know, the students were talking to her and it was something that they had wanted to do.
Okay. I, I didn't realize that that was actually, there was something behind that.
There was. So that's why I just wanted to, you know, let you know that there was, you know, there was a reason for it.
Mr. DeAndrea is going to talk to her.
Okay, great. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public? Thank you. We will close public at this time. Can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make a call bet.
Please? I would like to thank Ms. Marr, Ms. Brady, and Mr. Gentile for a job well done.
Not to mention, not to mention, the stars of the show, all the students did a fantastic job. I, I was gonna let the meeting adjourn, but I would also like to thank, first of all, all the parents for allowing us to spend some time with your children. Uh, this is a great opportunity for us to get to know them, uh, to get to work with them directly and it's a night that we all very much look forward to. Also to Ms. Marr, Mrs. Brady, and the Samso Upper Elementary School staff, thank you for prepping them. I had an op- opportunity to actually meet with them along with Dr. Alfano. And please know that they not only know their particular lines or script or the individual function that they do here, but they actually understand how a board of education works, what we do. They understand the three branches of government, they understand what branch we are, and they've really gone through a very extensive, uh, learning process into, into government and civics. So we're really appreciative of the Samso team for helping them, uh, pick up on what we do and, and be a part of this night. I'd like to thank all of you and especially thank you to the kids.
Ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Go home and do your home, go home and do your homework. Meeting adjourned.